I'd like to call the November 20th, 2012 meeting of the Board of Education to order. To begin, we'll have the invocation, Ms. Etheridge?
Yes, we'd like to take this opportunity at this Thanksgiving season to wish all our teachers and all of our employees at Currituck School System, oh, Happy Thanksgiving. We'd also like to thank all of the teachers of the year, as well as the teacher assistants of the year, and to congratulate them tonight. If you would all pause for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. John Barnes.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have our school spotlight in this month that's on Central Elementary.
Good evening, Ms. Schuler and board members. Thank you for having us tonight. November has been a busy month for us at Central, and we've focused a lot on our veterans and also on the recent elections. Ms. Ross, our media coordinator, coordinated with lots of our teachers to have events going on throughout the ending of October and into November. They researched about the different candidates who were in the presidential race. They also had a board that they put up doing countdown to the election. Excuse me. And we have two students here who, in Ms. Barnes' class, they got together and they actually did research on voting practices, why you vote, and different things, and I'm gonna let them tell you a little bit about that.
Hi, my name is Leila Valentine. I'm seven years old, and I'm in Ms. Fresso's 4th grade class at Central Elementary. In November, we held a mock election for the presidential candidate, President Obama, Governor Mitt Romney, and Gary Johnson. We discussed characteristics of a good leader, also known as the Seven Habits. Then we read about the qualifications you need to become president and made posters for the students at Central Elementary. We continued on by making and decorating a ballot box for us to use to cast our votes for president. After that, we cut out 100 ballots for teachers, assistants, and students at our school. After students registered, it was election time. We checked off students' names and handed them ballots as they came in to vote, and then directed people to defend votes. After they voted, we gave them a sticker. They announced the results on their news. President Barack Obama had won. While working with the election, we learned about the qualifications to become president. The qualifications are you must be 35 years or older, and you have to have lived in the United States for 14 years. You also have to have been born in the United States. If you get elected, you can only serve two terms, which is eight years. We also learned about the process of an election. First, you have to register to vote. Then, the day of the election, you can tell them, you tell them your name, and then they check off your name. They give you a ballot. When you are done filling in your ballot, you put it in a ballot box. Then you get a sticker saying that you voted. We also learned how the president uses the Seven Habits. One of them is he uses seeking first to understand by listening to what citizens say and then tries his best to understand. We had lots of fun learning about the election process.
Thank you, girls. They had a significant part. Again, they coordinated with our media coordinator. All the students in the school went in, and they heard our 5th graders who had actually researched specific candidates. They gave speeches based on what they had learned. So the kids listened to their campaign speeches, and then they voted. They got an "I voted" sticker. They checked us off when we went in. It was great. We did pre-K right on up to 5th grade. The other activities we've done throughout the month of November are Veterans Day activities. We had a Veterans Day luncheon. We had our walls decorated with stars with names of veterans that students had brought in and created a huge flag on our wall. We had pre-K students who used their hands and feet to make beautiful flags. So lots of decorations. Our kids read books about veterans. They wrote thank-you letters to them. Pre-K wrote to a sailor on the USS Eisenhower. And then all that's being followed up. Ms. Stather, our kindergarten teacher, has taken lots of these decorations that the kids have made throughout the building. She's gonna be delivering them to the Veterans Hospital up in Hampton soon, and they were really excited to be getting all of these things. So at this time, we have a video just to show you the activities that we've been doing throughout the month.
Yeah, that's my dad. Yeah. And his...
Kinda like secretary, take care of personnel, like all their pay, all their awards, something like that.
What's up?
Fight?
They fight. But they also can shoot missiles, which is pretty cool, right? Like that one. That's a Tomahawk cruise missile. Yeah.
And thanks to Ms. Ross, our media coordinator, who put this together. A lot of the pictures that you saw were of a veterans museum that she also put together, and some of our parents who had come in to share their experiences, so...
Thank you. That's very nice. Could you have the two young ladies come back up and give us their first and last names that did the presentation?
Well, my name is Olivia Burton.
My name is Leila Valentine.
Great. Both of you, thank you very much. You did a very nice job. Nobody signed up for the public comment session, so we'll go to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, under 21st Century Professionals, we have Teacher of Excellence Recognition, Anne Henderson, Director of Exceptional Children.
If I can ask Ms. Simmons to come up? I'd like to say welcome to Ms. Simmons. Ms. Simmons was recognized at our Central Children's Conference last week as the Currituck Teacher of Excellence, and the plaque reads, "On behalf of the State of North Carolina, the State of Board of Education, and the Department of Public Instruction, we extend our gratitude and appreciation for dedicated service and outstanding contributions to the education of exceptional children in our state." Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll have recognition for Teachers of the Year. Board and Superintendent Schuler, assisted by Sandy Kinsel, Assistant Superintendent. You want the board down front?
Yes, please. And while you're on your way down front, I will kind of preface this. This week, schools and districts across the country celebrate American Education Week. It's fitting that our Board of Education take this time to recognize and honor our 2012-2013 Teachers of the Year and Teacher Assistants of the Year for their professionalism and dedication to providing quality public education for every student in Currituck County Schools. The Teacher of the Year and Teacher Assistant of the Year selection process began last spring with one teacher and one teacher assistant being chosen to represent their school. And from these school representatives, candidates were interviewed and the winner selected by a committee of retired educators and community members. So at this time, we'd like to recognize those teachers and Teacher Assistants of the Year. We're gonna be presenting all of them with a plaque and some of our county winners with a little extra bonus, just in time for Christmas. So, the county winners, again, representing JP Napp Early College from Currituck, and as well as our Currituck County's Teacher of the Year, we'd like to have Mr. Beau Davenport.[872.56][872.56](applause) Mr. Davenport is a health and fitness teacher and has been very involved in implementing and promoting the PEP grant program initiatives. So we're very proud that he's recognized for that. And thank you, Beau. Please come back up here so that we can get a group picture.
At the end.
Yeah, you'll stand in the circle. Okay? Let me make sure I have my list. Our other teachers, recognized by their schools as Teachers of the Year, include Molly Hurdle from Central Elementary School.[918.56][918.56](applause) Deb Bubler from Currituck County High School.[930.44][930.44](applause) Kathy Blades from Currituck County Middle School.[938.61][938.61](applause) Beth Williams from Jarvisburg Elementary School.[946.13][946.13](applause) Wendy Burgett from Charboro Elementary School.[955.88][955.88](applause) I think this one's very special, given the timing. Ms. Donna McLeod from Knott's Island Elementary School.[968.38][968.38](applause)
Okay. It's awesome. Sorry, John. (laughing) Oh.
All right, I didn't get back to the thing.
Yeah. That's exactly right.
From Moyoc Elementary School, Ms. Julianne Iorio.[994.94][994.94](applause) Melanie Anderson from Moyoc Middle School.[1006.23][1006.23](applause) And Susan Hamlin from Dr. W.T. Griggs Elementary School.[1015.31][1015.31](applause) Hey, our Teacher Assistants of the Year. Representing Charboro Elementary School and Currituck County Schools as Teacher Assistant of the Year is Mr. David Ayers, otherwise known as "The Rock Star."[1033.19][1033.19](laughing) He must have a gig or something tonight because he couldn't be with us. But Mr. Ayers serves Charboro as the PE Teacher Assistant, and like Mr. Davenport, has been very involved with the PEP grant initiatives. And again, that's represented in the county winners and their selection. So we're very proud of that and the initiative, giving them the opportunity to shine. So thank you. Other distinguished teacher assistants in our county are Amy Baker from Central Elementary Ms. Barbara Griffin from Currituck County High School.[1080.71][1080.71](applause) Ms. Dawn O'Donnell from Jarvisburg Elementary School.[1093.33][1093.33](applause) Congratulations. Ms. Jane... Oh, you can.[1103.21][1103.21](laughing) Ms. Annette Samborsky from the JP Napp Early College.[1109.83][1109.83](applause) Ms. Robin Peterson from Knott's Island Elementary School.[1120.65][1120.65](applause) Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Teresa Sawyer from Moyoc Elementary School.[1134.01][1134.01](applause) Bobby Johnson from Moyoc Middle School.[1143.83][1143.83](applause) I say Moyoc Middle earlier. Teresa Sawyer's from Moyoc Elementary. I may have confused them on my list, but... And our final representative is Ms. Maxine Stats from W.T. Griggs Elementary School.[1158.83][1158.83](applause) Very distinguished group, and we're very proud of the service you provide to the students every day, and thank you so much for that. If you'll just stand for a picture, I'll be done with you.[1171.71][1171.71](laughing)
She probably wants y'all to... You'll kind of work with them? Yeah. Go ahead and get behind them. And I do not have a wide-angle lens, so you're gonna have to...
Oh, let her come on up here. She come on. That's all it's all about, kids. It's all about.
You're a happy bunch. This is great.[1212.28][1212.28](laughing) I think that'll do, but we'll do one more, just in case. Thank you.
Okay, we have two members of our Board of Education that are leaving us. This is their last meeting. The first I'd like to recognize is Amy Ennis. Amy was appointed to the Board in 2007 and was elected in 2008. She was very instrumental in the development of JP Napp Early College, and for that and other contributions, we'd like to present her with this plaque that says, "Amy Ennis, Currituck County Board of Education Member, 2007 to 2012, in appreciation of your support, direction, and services to the students and staff of Currituck County. Presented by the Currituck County Board of Education." Oh, and next, I don't even know how to begin. John Barnes is the longest-serving Board Member in the State of North Carolina. He came on the Board in 1976. He was appointed in March of '76. He never had any opposition when he ran for public office, which shows the faith that the community of Knott's Island had in him. And for that, we would like to present you with this plaque, John. Oh, and his legacy will be, we probably have, some of the finest school facilities in the State of North Carolina, and it was all championed by one Board Member, Mr. Barnes.[1344.52][1344.52](applause) And John's plaque reads, "John E. Barnes, in great appreciation for dedicating over 36 years of service to the children of Currituck County. Your wisdom and devotion leaves a legacy of excellence that will never be forgotten. 1976 to 2012, Currituck County School Board Member." Congratulations, John. We have one more award to give to John, and we're honored tonight to have our State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Dr. June Atkinson, with us, who will help make this next presentation. Dr. Atkinson was, became State Superintendent in August of 2005, was recently re-elected. She has a bachelor's from Radford, a master's from Virginia Tech, thank goodness.[1422.65][1422.65](laughing) And a doctor from NC State.[1426.42][1426.42](laughing) Anyway, and thank goodness she's here, because can you see how small that writing is?[1436.02][1436.02](laughing)
Thank you.
Congrats. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you very much, Chairman Dobney, and members of the Currituck Board of Education, to your Superintendent, Dr. Schuler, and to the citizens of Currituck. It was indeed my pleasure to drive three and a half hours to see a man who has served this state, this county, for 36 years. And it really is wonderful to see a man who served as a public servant for so long without any opposition. So it really is important that I be here tonight because I am honored to be able to present to you the Order of the Longleaf Pine.[1478.33][1478.33](applause) And let me read to you what it says. "State of North Carolina, Beverly East Purdue Governor, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of John E. Barnes, I do by these presents confer the Order of the Longleaf Pine with the rank of Ambassador extraordinary. Privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is a special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast in select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to Down Home, the Old North State, signed by the Governor, Bev Purdue, dated November 20, 2012."
Thank you. Thank you.
Back in the picture. Back in the crowd. Yes, in the crowd.[1567.65][1567.65](laughing)
Gotta come in the horseshoe one more time.
And I'd like you to be right up front and center, if you would, next to Dr. Atkinson. And this one's really important, but that's the big one.
Yeah.
You can probably send that to us, Kate.
Larmont?
I can.
I sure can.
Cause I'll be better than this.
Come on in.
Yeah, you can send it to me.
Tom, can't see you, babe.
I don't want. This is too good, Doc.
Yes.
I would like to thank Dr. Atkinson one more time. She is the first and only female State Superintendent the State of North Carolina has ever had, and considering her busy schedule, she's in charge of approximately 1.5 million students throughout the state and about 2,500 schools. So thank you once again for taking the time to come to us.[1659.33][1659.33](applause) Okay, next, globally competitive students. Student School Board Member Report, Jonathan Jackson.
Well, that's gonna be hard to beat.[1674.65][1674.65](laughing) Let's start off with Currituck County High School. Project Purple has been started and introduced. It's a coalition of students to positively pressure their peers to make good decisions. The fall drama production, an evening of one-act plays, was this past weekend. I have only heard good reviews and praise from Mr. White and the Drama Department for providing a great source of entertainment. DECA is running their book drive for the year-long literacy campaign, and food drives to support the local food bank are now underway through SGO and Beta Club. And additionally, you may soon see Operation Santa Claus containers pop up around the county. This is sponsored by the SGO, and our goal is to raise money to provide a Christmas to families in need in the county. The fall sports athletic banquet was held last night. Many awards were given out, which proves that a lot of student talent is in our athletics department. Men's and women's basketball, swimming, wrestling, and indoor track have now begun their 2012-2013 season. I encourage anybody to come out and support our nights for the winter season. The community holiday dinner was last Friday, and I can happily announce that because of the large support, we were able to feed over 600 plates of food to those in need across the county. Personally, I would like to thank Students Against Destructive Decisions, Junior ROTC, Ms. Brinkley with the Student Government, the Beta Club, and all other volunteers for helping to make this such a success. At JP Napp Early College, they sent eight students to participate in the National FPLA Leadership Program last week in Charlotte, North Carolina. Students have also collected holiday food items to prepare 10 Thanksgiving meal baskets for Spartan families. Special thanks to the Spartan SGO for helping out. In county news, Griggs Elementary hosted its annual fall festival this past Saturday. Everyone who went said that they had lots of fun with the children. I'd like to thank Rick Loggie and Thomas Poston, the junior student board members, for helping me put this together. And lastly, I would just like to say thank you... And lastly, I would just like to say thank you to both Ms. Ennis and Mr. Barnes. It has been an honor and a fulfilling pleasure to assist you up here at this Board. You will be missed dearly.
Thank you very much, Jonathan. Next item, field trip request.
Yes, Board Members, we have one field trip request. Currituck County High School Sassy, and that's student athletes, retreat in Corolla, North Carolina, December 8th and 9th.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a question, do they ever find a male chaperone?
Yes, we, there are four, I believe it's four, male, or five coaches that will be chaperoning along with other students there.
Oh, okay. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, approval to change December pay date. Ms. Trussell, Finance Officer.
Yes, sir. I'm making, we changed the December pay date from December 21st, which is an early release day, to December 20th. Due to the fact that if there are any errors on payroll or we miss paying someone, something's not reported to us, we have time to fix it before the two-week break at Christmas. And also, so that everything will be correct for W-2 reporting reasons.
So you're recommending we go to December 20th? Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So the payday will be the 20th. Next item, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Information items. Next work session will be December 10th, 2012, at 4:00 at the Napp Professional Learning Center. Next Board Meeting will be December 10th, 2012, right here in the historic courthouse. And next, Board Member Comments. Let's start with Ms. Etheridge.
Again, I would just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your families, just enjoy every minute, and every moment we have with our families is so special, we never know what's gonna happen, so enjoy your holiday, don't eat too much turkey, or maybe go ahead and eat too much turkey, what the heck? That's all I'd like to say.
Mr. Simmons?
This past weekend, I had a chance to go to the high school to the drama play that Buddy White put on. Wonderful, absolutely wonderful. I believe it was four one-act plays, and actually, one of the plays was written by a former student from here at Currituck High School. Her name was what, Ms. Scholler?
Beaman is her last name, and I don't remember the first.
Karen Beaman, she needs to, we need to be proud of her, what a wonderful play she wrote. Last but not least, Amy and John. It's really been enjoyable working with you two this past year. I had a chance to work with John last time I was on this Board. John Barnes is one of those people who, no matter what he voted on, he did the best thing for the kids of this county. And I can say that with all my heart. John's one of those guys who I always like to get to our Board Meetings early, so I can find out if there's any ducks on Knott's Island. Or if I can find out what's going on in Canada before we go up there, or if I can find out what fish are biting around the causeway. John is, you know, 36 years, you've been on this Board longer than most of our teachers are of age, so you've been here a long time. I can always say, when it came down to a vote, John was one of those people that you could look over to and know he always had a level head and he was gonna do what was right. And we're gonna miss John on this Board. I can say John Barnes is what I consider a true friend, and we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ennis?
I just wanna say thank you to everybody who's supported me these last six years that I've been on the Board. I think a lot of times, people forget to thank all the, everybody who makes our schools so wonderful. We thank the teachers, we thank the principals, but everybody, from the maintenance staff to the bus drivers, to the lawn care people, everybody, I guess the principals too, sorry. I know I forget somebody, but everybody who steps foot in the school, from volunteers, teacher assistants, everybody makes it, makes Currituck County what it is. And I think our children are very lucky to go to school here. I had one graduate, and he's doing really well in college, thanks to the education that he received here, and hopefully, my other two who are going through now will do the same. I just wanna thank everybody for the support.
Mr. Barnes?
Well, first, I wanna thank the voters in Currituck County for putting me in here for 36 years. Have enough trust in me to vote on me for 36 years, I wanna thank all the voters and all the citizens of Currituck County. Next, I wanna thank my Board Members. I thoroughly enjoyed working with you all, and my previous Board Members also. Same thing for my Superintendents. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with all the Superintendents we've had. We've had some good ones. I want to thank all of our school staff, all of our schools and all their staff. Thank them again. I thanked you once at reception, but I won't do it publicly. I wanna thank all of you for everything you've done. The central office couldn't be better. Whoever was involved in what you all put on this afternoon, I want to thank them. I don't know for sure, but I know a couple of them looking at one of them, a vet, and Sarah, and June, I wanna thank all of y'all, and everyone who was involved. Thank you a million, it meant a whole lot to me, it meant a lot to my family, and just again, I don't know how I can thank you so much. I wanna thank our Commissioners. Our Commissioners are our bread and butter, they're mighty good to us. If it wasn't for our Commissioners, we wouldn't have all the facility we have now. We're lucky to have good schools, and I understand that just about paid for, so I'm leaving you all in good hands, so I hope y'all can keep it that way. But anyway, I wanna thank each and every one of you a million times for all the recognition I got tonight. I sure didn't expect Ms. Atkinson-June to be here tonight and to present, I didn't expect that, y'all tricked me on that one. Anyway, thank you all a million, I'm gonna miss you, and I hope to see y'all quite often.
Thank you, John. I'd like to close tonight by giving you my definition of a contribution. And that's when you participated in a selfless act, and at the end of the day, you can look yourself in the mirror and say, you did the best job you possibly could, you have no regrets, and you've left this world a little better place. And that's what I consider as a contribution, and I thank John and Amy for their contributions to the kids of Currituck County.
I forgot, I wanna thank my wife publicly. Never made me, I apologize, honey, I didn't mean that. You kept me in the right clothes and made sure I was on time and all this good stuff, so, but anyway, thank you, honey, for all your support.
Great, and with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.